...there is. How much does that worry you?
So, this was an issue when the telephone came out. If you go back to the history of communications, everyone has had this concern, yet humanity has flourished during this period. So, it looks to us like the connectivity, these devices and so forth amplify human communication. They allow you to get more things done. But we don't see people spending less time with their loved ones as a result. They may just share it a little bit with their distractions that are going on, but there's an off button for that.
What is your message to folks who are out there? Some very comfortable with technology, others literally frightened of it, feeling that they are way behind when it comes to understanding where we are.
The good news is that in my professional career, computers have gone from being essentially impossible to use to being very, very useful at many, many tasks. You think about the ease of use with which you can watch a video, answer a question, sort of navigate. The new mobile phones and tablets are just so much better than anything that preceded them, and that's going to continue. Eventually, these devices will become very good at anticipating, this is again with your permission, the things that you care about. You'll carry them around, they'll make interesting suggestions, they'll become sort of your best digital friend and make your life fundamentally better.
Eric Schmidt, Jared Cohen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you can watch more of our conversation online, where we discuss what it will mean when the poorest people in the most remote regions of the world gain access to the web.
And finally tonight, a grisly addition to early American history. Founded in 1607, Jamestown was America's first permanent English settlement. The Virginia Company of London established the colony 60 miles north of the mouth of the Chesapeake Bay, naming the site James Fort after England's King James I. But life there was anything but easy. Historians believe the settlers arrived during the worst drought in 800 years, and disease, starvation, and conflict with nearby Native Americans plagued the colonists. Accounts from the time tell of residents forced to eat dogs, cats, rodents, and even shoe leather to fend off starvation. And it appears it was even worse than that. This is Jane. Researchers have now revealed evidence of cannibalism in the remains of a 14-year-old girl found in a trash pit at the colony site last summer. Forensic anthropologist Douglas Ousley says cut marks on the cheekbones and skull of the girl, they've named Jane, support the theory she was butchered after her death for consumption.
From my experience working with prehistoric skeletons, where I've seen post-mortem, meaning after death, processing of remains, this is absolutely consistent with what we see in cannibalism and those types of cases.
How Jane died remains unknown, but researchers say there was no evidence of murder. In all, some 80% of the colonists and members of a relief fleet sent from England died before the situation stabilized in 1610. And joining us now is William Kelso, Director of Archaeology at the Jamestown Rediscovery Project. He directed the team that unearthed the young woman's bones and is author of the book Jamestown: The Buried Truth. Well, thanks for joining us. Now, there have been written accounts of cannibalism in the past, right? So, is this something you were specifically looking for?
Well, there are written accounts. There are actually six from six different people, but they're all very enigmatic and they're hard to follow, and I personally didn't really believe that they were that true, because I thought they were making political statements back to sponsoring Virginia Company to send more supplies. But the fact that we have those, and now we have the forensic evidence, and also the archaeological context, where we found these remains in a layer of soil that we can date to what was called the starving time of 1609, 1610.
And as to the evidence, fill in the picture a little bit more that lets you know that it is definitely cannibalism. What are the signs that make this so clear-cut?
The marks, the cuts that are on the cranium, the skull, and these are the things that Dr. Ousley has pointed out, are, all add up to, someone wouldn't make these marks unless they were removing soft tissue and the brain from the skull. And there are just scores of sawing-like cut marks, where you know that the only reason that could be there is to remove the flesh.
What, we said that we don't know much about, well, we don't know how the young woman died. What do we know about her? What can be said?
Well, we don't know her name. We've named her Jane, as in Jane Doe, because, to give her some kind of a personality, but we don't know her name because the ships that came in 1609, that brought several women, there's not a list of their names. But we can know something from the fact that most of them that came were either the daughters of gentlemen or would be maidservants.
Now, so what is the significance for you of something like this, as you're looking at this long-term project of trying to figure out what happened there? Is this a big surprise? Is this a major step to know, sort of, I guess, how serious it was at that time?
Yes, that's certainly true, and it has had quite an impact on me. I think that archaeologists can deal with material culture artifacts and get some feeling for the people, but it's when you come face-to-face with something like this, in my case, I have a much more of an empathy for the situation they were in and the fact that Jamestown came so close to failing. And I think the course of American history from that point on, from this first permanent English settlement, would have been quite different had it failed.
Well, Phil, that, I mean, are we still learning more about what that winter was really like and what a close call it really was?
Well, I think so, right off, because there are these accounts that you can, you know, take as a grain of salt sometimes. But now, I'm convinced, you know, this happened. And to be reduced to that level of starvation is hard for a modern person to even imagine. But I think now we can, because here is conclusive proof, I feel, that that took place.
And what's the next step for you, or what's the next thing that you're most concerned to look for?
Well, we are still excavating in a cellar room that became a kitchen or bakery site down below ground. Now, that level, that layer of soil that Jane's remains were found in, of course, that's been excavated, but there's the floor levels of the kitchen, and we just started yesterday, and more today uncovering those layers. Now, I don't expect to find more of that situation, because the layers above is where we found it. But we can learn a lot about the starving time from what was thrown around in that cellar, and it's quite a thick layer. And the site is open to the public, and they can see us do these excavations right up front and close, so we're sharing our moment of discovery with the public as we do our research.
Okay, William Kelso on the archaeological discoveries at Jamestown. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Again, the major developments of the day. President Obama visited Mexico to promote jobs, trade, and immigration reform. April was the bloodiest month in Iraq in almost five years, with more than 700 people killed in bomb attacks and other violence. And the body of the Boston Marathon bombing suspect, Tamerlan Sarnayev, has been claimed. A funeral home retained by his family picked up the body this evening.
Online, a campaign to get Americans used to hearing the words "Madam President." Kwame Holman explains.
The progressive women's group Emily's List unveiled an effort to help elect the first female president of the United States in 2016. We take a look at polling and some potential contenders. And among presidential candidates of the last three decades, who still carries campaign debt? We look at a new report from the Center for Public Integrity. All that and more is on our website, newshour.pbs.org. Jeff?
And that's the NewsHour for tonight. I'm Jeffrey Brown.
And I'm Judy Woodruff. We'll see you online and again here tomorrow evening with Mark Shields and Michael Gerson, among others. Thank you, and good night.
Major funding for the PBS NewsHour has been provided by...
More than two years ago, the people of BP made a commitment to the Gulf, and every day since, we've worked hard to keep it. Today, the beaches in Gulf are open for everyone to enjoy. We've shared what we've learned so we can all produce energy more safely. BP is also committed to America. We support nearly 250,000 jobs and invest more here than anywhere else. We're working to fuel America for generations to come. Our commitment has never been stronger.
BNSF Railway. And with the ongoing support of these institutions and foundations. And... This program was made possible by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting and by contributions to your PBS station from viewers like you. Thank you. KQED thanks our members and community partners for their support. Readers of the San Francisco Chronicle do journalism backed by a century and a half of experience. Chronicle writers, columnists, and photographers provide in-depth reporting for Bay Area residents. More information is available at sfgate.com/special.
It is the largest collection of state parks in the nation. More than one and a half million acres protected within 278 parks. They are visited by more than 80 million people every year. Parks that preserve the storied landscapes that define California. California Forever: The Story of California State Parks.
Tonight at 8 on community-supported KQED.
We're likely to find genetically engineered foods at the ballot box and the supermarket. After nearly 20 years of eating them, questions persist.
You have nothing to hide. Go ahead and label. People want to know. Go ahead and tell them.
It just has one gene that's different that allows us...
The meetings can also be viewed on the city's website. Our technician tonight is, we're not sure, because we don't have one yet. And as a reminder, if you have a cellphone, could you please turn that off during the meeting?
He's back there now.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Well, we don't know who it is yet. And if you come up to speak to the podium, if you could please sign your name for the record so it gets included in the minutes. Okay? With that, first thing I'd like to do is introduce our new Community Development Director, Rich Grunow. Welcome, Rich. Rich started on the 22nd of this month and came from the San Diego area, and we're glad you're here. It's been a long time that that position has been filled by an interim person, so...
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And that brings us to additions, deletions of the agenda. Are there any, Danielle?
Just want to clarify that item, public hearing item 5B, 305 Fanmar, is continued to the June 6th meeting.
Okay.
The reason it was publicly advertised was because they asked for continuance after the noticing went out.
Okay, so 5B has been continued to the June meeting. Any comments from the Planning Commission?
Oh, I just have one. As the representative on the Art and Cultural Commission, I wanted to bring the attention to the artwork that is now in place at the back of the room. The Art and Cultural Commission has worked long and hard to find a way to have rotating public art, and this is the first display that we've got, so take a look at it. It's SoCal High students, a Cyrillic-style environment using linear perspective, so you'll see artwork appearing and rotating through. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? I'm going to come back to public comments. Any staff comments? See none? Okay, is there any one in the public that would like to comment on any item that's not currently on the agenda? Yes, or if you come up, state your name, please, and sign the roster there.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Peter Kellison. I'm a resident at 302 Fanmar, which is where Fanmar and Terrace intersect. And I'm here to comment very briefly on the, what was 5B, pulled from the agenda. I'd want to note that we appreciate the continuance that was granted, as our view was to be obstructed by that. But really, I wanted to state for the record that we had no notification of the project and didn't realize that it was underway until we received the postcard for this hearing in May. So, I apologize for not being part of the process prior, but we had no way of knowing it was underway. We've contacted the owner, they've been sensitive to our concerns, as well as others who would be impacted, and we appreciate their sensitivity regarding massing and the view elimination. And I'd like to state just for the record that going forward, as this has been continued, hopefully there'll be ongoing dialogue with all the different stakeholders regarding historic terms, it applies to code, netting, hopefully, to demonstrate the scope of the project, depending on what that project is, and any on-street parking implications. And with that, I would conclude my remarks for the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kellison. Anyone else have any comments on any items not on the agenda? Anything? See none? Then we'll go to item 3, which is the approval of the minutes from the April 4th meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I have a correction. On page 6, about three-quarters of the way down the page, it states that Commissioner Ortiz recalled participating in the discussion when the ordinance allowing the extra height was created, saying the intent was to give people who are remodeling, your words were "older homes." I feel like my words were "historic homes." And then, in the second phase of that sentence, it says "some leeway to get more room in smaller homes as long as they keep the," and I would like the word "historic" prior to integrity. And that, those are all the...
Okay, any other?
I'll move the minutes with a necessary corrections.
No second.
Motion a second then to approve the minutes as corrected. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item 4, which is the Consent Calendar. All the matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the Planning Commission votes on the action, unless members of the public or the Planning Commission request a specific item to be polled and discussed. And items polled will be considered in the order they are listed on the agenda. So, Ron?
I'd like to pull two items, 4A and 4C.
Okay. Anyone else? And I would like to pull item 4B.
Okay.
So, that pretty much takes care of everything.
Takes everything, okay.
Okay, so there's no point in asking members of the public if they want to pull everything, because everything's been polled. Okay, let's take item A first, 120 Monterey Avenue, the interpretive kiosk.
My reasons for pulling it, Mr. Chairman, is the way it's listed on the agenda, it sounded to me like they were going to put SoCal Creek interpretive signs in a new kiosk in Espinade Park. I've been assured that they are not, but they're doing two things, or at least they were anticipating doing two things. One was putting the kiosk in the park, and the other was to upgrade the existing interpretive signs along the creek. I understand that the money has not been found for the interpretive signs along the creek, and being that staff is here, she'd like to talk a little bit about it, so there we go.
Lisa?
I'll just clarify. It was originally the intent was to incorporate, as all one project was to do, the interpretive signs down by the creek. If you've seen their fish signs and habitat signs, and they're on both sides of the creek. And it turns out, there's quite a few of those signs, and the restoration project is going to be a little bit more expensive, and we were trying to coordinate them together. But we broke them apart because the budget was just $15,000, so we'll attempt to do that at a later time. So, we're just focusing on the kiosk at this time, and I have some materials up there too, if you have any questions. There's a mock-up of the design. There's a material sample what the kiosk will be made of, a stainless steel, and it kind of has a wave sort of effect, if you looked at it. And then, the tan one is what the otter, the coating on the otter that's going to sit on top, that's a bronze sculpture, will look like as well. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I do have questions, and maybe questions of staff. What are we being asked to do tonight?
Well, the instruction was to have the Planning Commission needed to approve the project because it was signage in the village, and from here, then the council will give final approval to the project, and then we'll go forward.
Okay, so I spoke with Councilmember Termini today, and it was his impression that we were going to be giving our okay or not on the size, the placement, but you're saying also the design. My question is, you know, being, this is the first one that we've ever had that has come to us. I think we need to be clear about what we're being asked to do and what our parameters are, so we don't overstep our parameters.
I agree, yes. And so, the, it is, it's the sign, it's the height, the dimensions, and the placement of the kiosk, but the actual design and the elements that it's composed of, that's the Art and Cultural Commission, actually ultimately, the City Council has the authority, if they may change what the features of it might be, but it's the actual approval of the placement of the object in the village.
So, we should not give any opinions on the design tonight?
See, that's correct. Darn. It's so hard to say that.
Any other questions? See none? Any member of the public want to comment on the interpretive kiosk for the Espinade Park? See no one, then we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Comments? Discussion?
We can't comment on anything we want to comment on.
Well, as the representative from the Planning Commission on the Art and Cultural Commission, the only thing I can relate is that a lot of thought went into, you know, doing the call to artists and selecting an artist for the project. And the location and the size of the kiosk is meant to be, you know, big enough so that the visitors that come to the village can get information that we want them to have, and yet to make it classy enough that it's not going to be an eyesore, it's going to be good signage, it's going to present, you know, a positive perspective of Capitola and an artful one. So, I would personally move that we approve it.
I do have one comment about the location of that. When the buses and the vans pull up with folks who are disabled and who are seniors from retirement homes and whatever to the twilight concerts, they do pull up in that area, and they unload, and so we should just kind of make sure that we're aware of the placement. And I would imagine that Councilmember Termini is, because he's always down there, but it might be, we could just check on that. I think it's worth looking at.
Okay, was there a second to the motion?
I could second.
Okay. I just have a comment, and looking at the pictures of the otter sculpture, maybe it's a bad picture, but it looks more like a dog with an otter's tail, and...
I did talk with Mr. Termini, and he said that this is just a rough of it, that it's going to look a lot more detailed, and her work is really beautiful.
Okay. Because otters don't have those big pug noses that stick out like that. They have little flat faces. Okay, well, who's going to be the overseer of the otter sculpture? Okay. Okay, then we have a motion a second to approve the interpretive kiosk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item 4B, 4980 Capitola Road.
And, Termini Ruth, I'm going to have to recoup myself from this one, because I live within 300 feet.
Okay. This is converting an existing office into a duplex, and the reason I pulled this, Rich or Danielle, was because I've read the staff report, I've seen your comment on the parking, the six spaces, but I'm really concerned about the lack of landscaping that's going to occur when we convert this into a residential unit. And since it only needs four parking places per code, I would prefer to see those two additional parking places in the front turned into landscaping, because it appears because of the carport construction, we're going to be actually losing landscaping.
That's true, yes.
So, I guess my question would be, since they're entitled to have all those spaces that already exist, can we condition it that two of those spaces be removed and replaced with landscaping?
Yes, as long as they maintain four spaces total.
Right, okay. Okay, so that would certainly be my request of the Commission to consider that, and perhaps continue this item until we can get a landscape planned for the frontage on that building.
Could we ask the applicant if they're amenable to that?
Is the applicant present?
What was your question?
Well, my concern is, which you probably just heard, the six parking spaces, which is really two more than you need, and the lack of landscaping because of those two additional parking spaces. And if you would be amenable to remove those and create some additional landscaping in there.
If we don't have a choice, yes.
Well, maybe one. Maybe they could have five, and one might be enough to satisfy us, and that's a good compromise.
That would help, yeah. I think any additional landscaping would help out there.
Yeah, I think so too. I think looking at four cars straight across is not necessarily what we're striving for.
Okay, so I'll go over it with the owners, but I'm sure we can come out with something that would work for everyone.
That'd be great.
Okay. So, then we can continue this item until the June meeting then, until we come up with a revised plan then?
So, you want a more of a site plan with landscaping showing?
Yeah, right.
Keeping at least, or eliminating one of the six parking spaces?
Yeah, perhaps the one on the far right, when you look at the progress.
That's the one I was thinking would be the easiest one to get rid of, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so then is there a motion to continue the item to the June meeting?
I'd just like to say something.
Comments, Ron?
Yeah, while I understand your client may like to have more spaces, car spaces, with four spaces or four cars plus two in a carport, it looks like a sea of cars, absolutely. I don't want you to go away tonight and think that I will vote for just one space having some kind of landscaping. I want to see the landscape plan before I commit myself, so I'm being right up front with you, okay? Okay, so you want to see four spaces only? I'd like to, personally, but if you can come up with a great landscaping plan and still retain five spaces, I may vote for you, but I'm not going to give you a blank check tonight, blank check tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I had a question for staff. What are the landscaping requirements?
It's actually just the two feet on either side of the drive is what's required.
But typically, when you develop a residential unit in a CN zone, you have to conform to the residential standards.
That's correct.
And that requires no parking in the front yard setback and that landscaping.
It's actually a CR district regulation, and it doesn't refer you to any other regulations like the CN district does.
If it did, when this is brought back, can you make sure it references when the code was changed? Because there should be a date. Because I concur with Mr. Ruth, the intent of the CR zone was to, if they were going to develop residential, then you go with residential specs with regards to setbacks and the rest of it, and if it's commercial, then we make some allowances.
Yeah, that's why the Lyndekey homes are like the way they are.
The way...
Okay, so we'll continue this item then till the first meeting in June?
Okay, so is that, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, the first meeting in June, is that when it's going to be voted on and decided, or?
If you have all the plans submitted, so we can review them, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we're just continuing, I don't think we need a motion to continue it, do we? Do we need a motion to continue it?
Yes.
I'll move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, okay?
Thank you.
We'll see you in June then. Okay, that brings us to item C, which is 100 Oakland Avenue, and this is a permit to remodel an existing single-family dwelling unit on a multi-unit property on Depot Hill.
Mr. Chairman, I pulled this item for a number of reasons. I've talked to staff over the weeks that this has been in the hopper here type of thing. I'm concerned with, first, the way it is advertised on our agenda. It's advertised as a remodel to an existing single-family dwelling unit on a multiple property in an R1 zone. It's a fourplex, folks. It's got four meters out there, it's got garages attached, and when you remodel to a single-family zone, you would have... a single-family zone, you would have rear and side yard setbacks to adhere to and all this other. Having said all this negative stuff, I really like the design and everything, but it became very hard when you go out and view the property. It used to enjoy an address on Grand Avenue for the front unit that we're talking about. This application, of course, has now moved the address to 100 Oakland, which is the side street or the street that you enter on. And then it becomes apparent to me, does 100 Oakland become the front yard, and then the north side become one of the side yards, and of course, the bluff become the other side yard, and the backyard be the area immediately east of the dwelling. I just think that when we have applications like this, and I've never seen it advertised as a single-family dwelling, when everything's attached, you can go out there and see 1, 2, 3, 4, and clearly know where you're going to each one of the units and how you get it. There is a breezeway attaching 1 to 2 right now. The meters are between 1 and under 2. I just think that we need to be more clear that what we're really doing is allowing the front unit of this fourplex to become a single-family residence with all the conditions that would be enjoyed in a single-family residential zone and all the requirements. I really like the design. The neighborhood likes the idea of what's going to be done out there. I'm just unhappy with the way it was advertised.
Any other comments?
It's always been a single-family home that I know of because it was Bob Thomaselli's.
Yes, it was Bob's, and I've been in the living room many times, but it's, if you look at how 2 is attached with a breezeway over the carports and the rest of it, and then the carports share back-to-back walls with no space between, and when you make 100 the address, where's your side yard setback to the north? Or are you considering the bluff side being the front yard, which it used to enjoy a Grand Avenue address? You know, it was just confusing when you go out there.
Okay.
But everybody likes it. I don't think you're going to have any problems.
Any comments on this item? If none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Got a motion to second then to approve the application at 100 Oakland Avenue for a remodel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item five, public hearings. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for the public discussion of each item listed below on the agenda, and the procedure is as follows. The staff will make a presentation. There will be a public discussion. The Planning Commission will comment. They'll close the public portion of the hearing, and the Planning Commission will discuss and make a decision. So our first item under public hearings tonight, and our only item since item B has been continued, is 355 Claire Street, and this is for a use permit, conditional use permit to expand an existing coffee house and establish a wine bar with a sale and dispensing of alcohol. Danielle, Rich?
The applicant's proposing a conditional use permit to expand an existing coffee house into an adjacent commercial space, to become a hybrid coffee shop and a wine bar, and this is located at Brown's Marketplace. The use permits require for the sale and dispensing of alcohol in the community commercial zoning district. Although it's a little faded, the existing floor plan is the coffee shop, and this is a vacant space which was previously the Weight Watchers business. Pretty much the floor plan will stay the same: kitchen area, tables and chairs, a lounge, a very small meeting room that can be rented out, and a wine bar. The tenant improvements are just new interior finishes, a small wine storage area, retail area, and there's no exterior alterations. The proposed hours are changing in your staff report. It's 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Friday, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Sunday, 7:00 to 9:00. The wine bar will open at 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and Saturday and Sunday at noon. In this corner, there is a small stage. They intend on using it for just acoustical music, and there is a condition to address remaining acoustical only. The chief of police has reviewed this, added some conditions along with the ABC for their liquor license, and staff is in support of the proposed expansion and use.
Okay. So with that, any questions for staff?
Is the 10 o'clock pretty much the maximum time that we allow businesses to stay open in that center? I know many years ago, we had some complaints from the neighbors and back, and we changed and modified the hours of operation for some of the businesses, or at least addressed that. So I believe it is set for the center.
It is true.
And is this, this is in line with that?
It is.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? It's a public hearing then, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone wishing to comment on this application to create a wine bar in addition to the coffee house in the Brown Bowl Ranch Center? See no one? Okay. We'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any comments? Discussion?
I move approval.
In light of your earlier question, I remember that the issue with regards to hours of operation really dwelled not so much on the businesses' hours of being open, dwelled on deliveries. And I would like to see us include one additional condition, that the hours of delivery for the rear delivery be adhered to from that previous...
I think that's part of, yeah, and I think putting it in the conditions is a good idea, but it should be part of every business in that area, in that...
Because that was the major concern.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in and a second to approve the application to create the wine bar in the Brown Bowl Center. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, welcome.
Okay. Item 5B is continued until the June meeting. Directors' report? Do we have one?
The report this time.
You're here.
Any commissioners' reports? None?
Okay. Well, you know, there may be one, and Lisa's left. I was supposed to be the member for the Commission on the Environment, and then the City Council chose to...
Suspend it.
Suspend after six months, but there was something that came up about a meeting they were having anyway, or a dinner or something, and...
We all received an email, and I think, maybe, has it already gone by, or has...
Yeah, I think, but I just wanted, my understanding is the City Council did vote. I was actually there at the City Council meeting, so that, the Commission on the Environment is not going to be, I understand they may have some ancillary or ad hoc meetings outside the scope of Capitola. Is that the way it's working?
Yes.
Okay. Which I don't think I necessarily have to be part of at that point.
Those aren't official.
Just wanted to confirm that.
You just wanted to give up my previous job, couldn't you?
That was good.
You skated on that one. Well, first it was mine.
Any other comments from the commissioners? If not, Rich, glad you're here again.
Thank you very much.
And the meeting is adjourned.[1766.01]